Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. The board met in closed session. Uh, no action was taken. I will now get us started with the public charge for our regular session this August 11th. The Board of Commissioners asked its members and residents to conduct themselves in a respectful courteous manner, both with the board and fellow residents. At any time, should any member of the board or any member of the public fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. Commissioner Burton, would you like to read the land acknowledgement?
Yes. Land acknowledgement. As we convened for the Durham County Commissioners Meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Kataba, Ino, Okanichi, Shakori, and Tuscarora peoples whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the injustice placement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit the land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. Uh, Commissioner Jacobs, will you lead us in the pledge? Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, second by Commissioner Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is passed, a four to zero. Um, before we start announcements, I would like to request an excused absence for Commissioner Valentine. Or so I make a motion, or I'll ask for a motion.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, second by Commissioner Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Commissioner Valentine is excused. Now, we will move to announcements.
Good evening, everyone. I will read the announcements published in tonight's agenda. If you were impacted by Tropical Depression Chantéau, you can get in-person help at the Durham County Library North Regional Branch, located at 221 Milton Road through Saturday, August 30th at 1:00 PM. Apply for disaster aid and loans, connect with recovery agencies, and get information or resources available. The hours are Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. You can visit durhamnc.gov for additional information. The Durham County Tax Administration is expected to mail 2025 tax bills to Durham County property owners on Tuesday, August 12th. Taxes are due September 1st, 2025, but must be paid by January 5th, 2026, to avoid interest and additional costs. For information, please visit www.dconc.gov backslash tax, or contact Durham County Government Call Center at 919-560-0300. Payment may be made by check, bank draft, money order, cash, or you can pay it online. The Durham County Government and City of Durham in partnership with the Triangle West Transportation Planning Organization and the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and the East Coast Greenway Alliance are excited to announce the second round of community engagement for the Durham to Roxboro Rail Trail Planning Study. A community-driven initiative to assess the transformation of an 18-mile inactive rail corridor into a multi-use trail. We're offering three drop-in public workshops where attendees can provide their input at their convenience. August 18th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Durham County Main Library. August 27th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Edison Johnson Recreation Center. And August 28th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Spruce Pine Lodge, I'm sorry. Online survey and other information can be found at durham2roxboroughtrailplan.com, and the two is the number two. Join the All-Timers Association East North Carolina Chapter and Durham County Library for the next, in a year-long series of a year program designed to support and educate caregivers, helping to provide them with the tools they need to successfully provide compassionate care for individuals living with dementia and for themselves. On Friday, August 15th, between 12:00 and 1:00 PM at the Main Library, the topic will be Exploring Care and Support Services, which explains how best to prepare for
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. The board met in closed session. Uh, no action was taken. I will now get us started with the public charge for our regular session this August 11th. The Board of Commissioners asked its members and residents to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the board and fellow residents. At any time, should any member of the board or any member of the public fail to observe this public charge, the chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. Commissioner Burton, would you like to read the land acknowledgement?
Yes. Land acknowledgement. As we convene for the Durham County Commissioners Meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Kataba, Ino, Okanichi, Shakori, and Tuscarora peoples whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the injustice placement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit the land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. Uh, Commissioner Jacobs, will you lead us in the pledge? Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Um, are there any adjustments to the agenda? None, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, second by Commissioner Burton. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is passed, a four to zero. Um, before we start announcements, I would like to request an excused absence for Commissioner Valentine. Or, sorry, make a motion?
Is that a motion?
I'll ask for a motion.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, second by Commissioner Jacobs. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Commissioner Valentine is excused. Now, we will move to announcements.
Good evening, everyone. I will read the announcements published in tonight's agenda. If you were impacted by Tropical Depression Chantel, you can get in-person help at the Durham County Library North Regional Branch located at 221 Milton Road through Saturday, August 30th at 1:00 P.M. Apply for disaster aid and loans, connect with recovery agencies, and get information or resources available. The hours are Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You can visit durhamnc.gov for additional information. The Durham County Tax Administration is expected to mail 2025 tax bills to Durham County property owners on Tuesday, August 12th. Taxes are due September 1st, 2025, but must be paid by January 5th, 2026 to avoid interest and additional cost. For information, please visit www.dconc.gov/tax or contact Durham County Government Call Center at 919-5600300. Payment may be made by check, bank draft, money order, cash, or you can pay it online. The Durham County Government and City of Durham in partnership with the Triangle West Transportation Planning Organization and the North Carolina Department of Transportation and the East Coast Greenway Alliance are excited to announce the second round of community engagement for the Durham to Roxboro Rail Trail Planning Study. A community-driven initiative to assess the transformation of an 18-mile inactive rail corridor into a multi-use trail. We're offering three drop-in public workshops where attendees can provide their input at their convenience. August 18th from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. at the Durham County Main Library. August 27th, 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. at the Edison Johnson Recreation Center. And August 28th from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. at Spruce Pine Lodge, I'm sorry. Um, online survey and other information can be found at durham2roxboroughtrailplan.com. And the two is the number two. Join the All-Timers Association East North Carolina Chapter and Durham County Library for the next, in a year-long series of a year program designed to support and educate caregivers, helping to provide them with the tools they need to successfully provide compassionate care for individuals living with dementia and for themselves. On Friday, August 15th, between 12:00 and 1:00 P.M. at the main library, the topic will be exploring care and support services, which explains how best to prepare for future care decisions and changes, including respite care, residential care, and end-of-life care. You can register at the Durham County Library website. That concludes the announcements published in tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Clerk Wallace. Are there any additional announcements from the board? Commissioner Jacobs?
I just wanted to, um, share some good news. Um, Durham County was accepted into the NACO Youth Justice Peer Exchange, and Crystal Harris and Joanne Price will be attending to...
Pierce.
What did I say? Did I? Oh, I'm s... Sorry about that. Crystal Harris and, uh, Joanne Pierce. Um, uh, Crystal Harris, our Director of Community Intervention and Support Services, and Assistant County Manager Joanne Pierce will be representing Durham County, and that is taking place in Pierce County, Washington. Um, so very excited about that. And, um, I am going to be, I was accepted into the NACO Fall 2025 Behavioral Health and Crisis Response Peer Exchange in Henrico County, Virginia, where Richmond is, um, which I'll be attending next month, which will be focused on, um, using our 911 call centers, um, following best practices on, um, helping to divert behavioral health calls, um, from the 911 system. So I look forward to bringing back information to share with everyone after that experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. None, then. Um, we have our minutes for our July 28th regular session. Are there any edits that anyone would like to make? Or I'll entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
I'll second.
A move by Commissioner Burton, second by Vice Chair Dr. Lee. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Now moving on to consent agenda. Are there any i... We also have the announcement, um, Ms. Sarah Stevens is here. Uh, if you would like to come up to introduce yourself, even though we know you, because you left us?
Yeah. Right, I know, you thought you got rid of me, and here I am. Um, no, Chair Alom, Commissioners, County Manager Hager, and all who serve Durham County. My name is Sarah Stevens, no stranger to this space. Um, but I am making my rounds. I've actually spoken with quite a few of you in the last few weeks, and thank you for the, um, congratulatory remarks and the well wishes. Um, um, but I am now your point of contact for Duke Energy. I am the District Manager for Government and Community Relations, and the District Manager is over Durham, Orange, Chatham, and Lee Counties. Um, so I will be your point of contact. Um, I'm two weeks in, so give me a little bit of time, but I look forward to working alongside you all in this capacity.
Thank you for joining us today, and as sad as we were to lose you at the library, we're glad that you're staying close and continuing to serve Durham in this new capacity. You, and now we'll move to consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull? Eva, is there just a question?
Yeah, just, just one question. Um, I just want to, I will, um, support the item, but I just want to make sure that item 25-0430, that in the scope of work, um, had that been amended? Or is it going? That's been amended. I actually sent an email to also catch. I know y'all have been in closed session, so... Okay, all right, thank you so much. And it should be updated in the system. Okay, great. Okay, thanks so much. And just so everyone will know, when we met at the work session, there was desire to make sure we were specific that the, um, contract with student U would show a annual report, so I added language to note that an annual report would happen, um, for this particular year by May 29th, 2026.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, then I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda if there's no other questions?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Burton, second by Commissioner Jacobs. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent is passed unanimously, four to zero. That brings us to the end of our agenda. It's a record, even though we've been here a while, but, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, second by Commissioner Burton. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
Yeah.